Good evening. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege and pleasure to welcome members of the public for your interest in the proceedings of our fair city. And first, foremost, however, we welcome the members of the Vader City Council who are with us. Plus, acknowledge the presence of Jill Nielsen, our city clerk treasurer, who is continuing to ensure that we're functioning effectively technologically. So with that, I would officially call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. And with that, would invite our city clerk to conduct our roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
Present.
Mark Fennessen?
Present.
Justin Olson?
Present.
Joe Schei?
Present.
And Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And Mayor Smith?
As well. We have a forum, so let's proceed now with our pledge of allegiance. Would invite all to please ready. Mr. Schei, would you lead us, please?
Yes. Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our home and of our home.
Quite excited about our prospects or our meeting this evening. Confident in this meeting, if all things go according to our tentative plan, we may finish by 7:30, if not before. So it would be something of a record for the city of Vader, so we'll see. But let's leap into the mayor's report, which is the first item on our underpichtable agenda. We have a number of issues that have arisen in the past couple of days that didn't make it onto the agenda. I would speak quickly. I wanted to brief the council on the grant package, which involving Burlington Northern and San Rafael Railroad. We're making some progress on it. I would say that our application is about a third completed. There are a lot of details and little questions that need to be addressed individually and some stuttering and stammering because my wife is involved with it and I'm only overseeing it peripherally. But I'm confident that within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to present perhaps a rough draft for the council to review. I wanted to brief the council on the latest involving Blue Array. The, as many of you are aware, J.J. Telly has initiated the extraction process. The bins have been removed. I believe we have photographed evidence that as of this afternoon, all of the bins that were used in the prototype project were removed. And so the city has been the beneficiary of that moving process in that we've received some of the material that was going to be removed and taken to the dump. We have, we're in the process of receiving that in a way that's legal. So we'll see how all that plays out. But our public clerk's employee is coordinating that activity with our city attorney in Baltimore, Joe Ray Berger, as well. So I also wanted to express appreciation to those who participated in the workshop that took place last week with Kathy Reed from the Washington State Department of Commerce. And remind all in attendance and insert as a public record that our next workshop will be held on May 16th at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. I wanted to ensure that the council was aware that the police auction is going to take place on Sunday and one of our surplus vehicles, which the council surplus some months ago, will finally be available for the public in that auction process. So hopefully, we will have an additional parking space in front of the city hall. I wanted to bring to the council's attention a follow-up on a topic that I discussed in our last council meeting that was provided for informational purpose by Dan Leahy, a professor from Evergreen State College. He contacted me yesterday and followed up on his conversation with us. I will distribute this for council's education after. We made copies of the email that he sent. I'm not going to go over it in detail, but he is pointing out that the extra, I see. If there's any extras, we can distribute them to members of the public to whom they want some.
Two of them, if anybody wants them.
This has to do with the growing concerns about the potential environmental impact of the oil trains that will be increasing in number through the city of Vader and other cities along the proposed refinery routes. It's oil from the Bakken crude oil field in North Dakota. And his assessment is that trains are going to increase dramatically as this refinery process kicks in. Right now, we average from 64 to 68 trains per day through the city of Vader, and that number will probably increase by 15 to 20% over the next two to three years. And he's making a dire prediction that somewhere along this route, it's inevitable that a derailment will occur. And the last one that occurred involving this type of oil claimed the lives of 47 people in the province of Ontario, Canada. But information is made available for you in this report here. But what he wanted me to convey to the council members is that on April 29th at 5:00 PM, at...
Oh, Centralia High School.
Thank you. I told you, my member. Centralia High School, 5:00 PM, April 29th, there will be a meeting of all concerned and interested individuals relating to this subject. He's hoping that representatives from the elected city council of Vader may be inspired to go, including myself. So that's that topic. If you want more clarifying information, I feel I'd have no qualms about talking to the crackhead after the meeting. My opinion, that concludes my mayor's report. So we'll proceed with our next item on the agenda, which is our special reports. And our first report will be provided to us by a member of the park board. Chairman of that committee is Steve Crowe. So we turn the microphone over to him.
Well, our long away today has come, which will be Monday for pouring our concrete for the basketball court at Worden Park. And I would ask if we know anybody that's got some time on Monday morning, it's supposed to start at 8:00 in the morning, just run a couple hours to make that pour, if we could use some more help if we could get it. And we've gotten all the material we need, so it's just a matter of doing the work on... We've got some more work to do prior to that over the weekend to get ready for the rerate pour on Monday morning at 8:00. If we could get some more help. I've got about four people lined up. We could use a few more if that's possible. I think that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you for that report, then. Thank you for the progress it's been making on that topic. Now let's proceed with the approval of the official agenda inserting...
Oh, you want to insert?
Yeah, I'll do it after, just so that the council can provide their input on request. I have no personal changes on the agenda, but would suggest that if the council would so approve, that we insert the presentation by Diana, what is your last name?
Peck.
Peck. Diana Peck, who apparently contacted our city clerk and requested some time in the Vader City Council. And I would suggest that we insert that as the first item after the official approval of the agenda, but would defer for appropriate motion from a member of the council.
I would put forth a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of Diana Peck's presentation for the agenda for what's today's state item?
24th.
April 24th, 2014.
Okay. Prepared a motion submitted before the council by Mr. Flynn to approve the agenda as it's written, with the insertion of a presentation by Diana Peck at the outset. We have a second. Seconded by Mr. Wilson.
No.
One addition.
Number one is that on the unfinished business, new business of our packet, that's on the agenda you have here.
Mr. Wilson, you know that we have a motion submitted by the council. And so at this moment in time, to modify that, we would first need to see if there's a second for that motion prior to suggesting that there be other action on the motion. Second that motion. Okay. Well, we've had a second for that motion. Now is the opportunity for the council to...
I just received this, all these nine documents today. I came in yesterday and the clerk did not have them ready, although I couldn't get on the website with the web to give me. That's why maybe I had them, but I haven't had time to really understand the ordinances, different ordinances under the unfinished business, new business, to make a decision. If I made a decision, I may be wrong or I may be right. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other input or feedback from other members of the council regarding the motion for the body? If not, then we'll proceed with a vote on said motion. All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Okay. I've one opposed, and the motion nonetheless carries, so we'll proceed with the approved agenda as passed by the council, which means that our first item would be a special report by Diana Peck. And we'd invite you to take the microphone. Do you have a rough idea how long this may take?
Couple minutes. So my name is Diana. I am, well, I'm, my job title is I'm the sexual assault program coordinator at the Human Response Network. We're a nonprofit in Chalos, Washington, and we've worked with survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. We work with advocates to basically help any of their emotional or just be, just, I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry. Just to be a support system and help them, help them with the necessities that they might need after to, I am stumbling over my words.
Okay.
So we help them, basically, that's what we do. So during the month of April is the National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so we're reaching out to all of our communities in Lewis County to help them to bring awareness to the community and help them to become allies in the community as well. So generally, during this part, the mayor would read the proclamation, so I can read it.
Sure.
Okay. So this is the proclamation. It says, "Whereas sexual assault awareness must draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of the city of Vader, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will be experiencing a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in Lewis County through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the Human Response Network is the recognized accredited service provider for sexual assault advocacy services for the citizens of Lewis County." So this next part would be your turn.
Okay. Well, since this is as new to me as it undoubtedly is to members of the council, but I'm easily convinced on this topic, so I would have no qualms about reading the now therefore portion of this and then allow the council to declare whether or not they want to make it official. Yes, you have some input?
We would need to wait until the next council meeting to officially adopt it, but if they want to state their intentions, that would be okay because it's not on the agenda. So it would need to be put on the next agenda.
Okay. I would...
I can finish it. So this next part would be where the mayor would declare that this is indeed Sexual Assault Awareness Month, including your community. And so it says, I, well, I'm Diana, but I'm not Ken Smith. Hereby complain the month of April as, April 2014, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Vader. We ask the community members to recognize the serious impact of sexual assault and to support victims and embrace a significant role each of us can play in the prevention of sexual assault. Signed, sealed, and dated this 24th day of April 2014."
Okay. Well, very good. It's unfortunate that we're so theoretically bound by our administrative regulations, but and obviously we're on the 24th, so it would only be six days in which we could officially recognize the month for that activity.
I'm happy to do awareness regardless.
That's right.
Our goal is to reach out and, you know, try to involve every community member in becoming an ally in preventing sexual domestic abuse. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I would just be remiss if I didn't add a little postscript. Those of you who maybe are new to the community or not as plugged in as perhaps others may be can affirm that the city of Vader is not immune to this sort of unfortunate activity and that I am personally acquainted with individuals during my tenure as mayor who have suffered from this. And so I do agree with the gravity of the problem that exists. And so I'm being genuinely sincere when I indicate my support of this effort. Thank you for that. All right. Well, now having accomplished that, we will proceed with the approval of the minutes as noted, awaiting council action.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 10th, 2014, as noted.
Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the minutes for April 10th, 2014, as noted. We have a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Okay. All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's carried. Now we'll proceed with the voucher approvals, as also noted on your agenda.
Hi. I'd like to motion to approve the vouchers at the end of April 2014 in amount of $20,775.38 total for April 2014 of $34,944.15.
Okay. Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to approve the figures as noted. We have a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Fennessen. All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carried. Now we'll leap into public comment.
Don't have anyone signed up.
Oh, I'm cheating. Excellent. Okay. Well, it is what it is. Now we'll dive in now to our unfinished business. Item number one, a resolution for council consideration, 03, or number three dash 1014, franchise agreement for our water system. A lot of explanatory verbiage needs to be expanded on this. No surprise to you. I'm sure that we needed to, as council, address this resolution prior to April 30th, which was the deadline for city data action on this franchise agreement. Hope that council members have had a chance to review this. Mr. Wilson notwithstanding, I thought the packets were ready yesterday. So...
Later in the day. He can't, he was there first thing in the morning. It wasn't ready first thing in the morning.
Okay. All right. We're able to wait some council?
I'd like to put forth a motion that we approve Resolution 032014 franchise agreement with, for the water system.
Okay. We need to read that.
Read that in the matter of title.
Okay. In the matter of non-exclusive franchise to Lewis County to construct, operate, and maintain a water system on Vader City right of ways and setting forth conditions accompanying a grant of a non-exclusive franchise and providing for city administration and regulation of said franchise.
Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion to approve this resolution number, so as indicated and as read. We have a second for this motion.
A second now.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Do we have any additional commentary at this moment in time?
I have a question. So in section 3.4, it talks about compensation and the city's right to ask the county for compensation and to reimburse the city in connection with administration and oversight costs. Are we going to have any administration or oversight costs that we would need to ask for compensation about?
That's a very good question. And if Mr. Ray Berger were here, I'm extremely confident that he would say it is not likely. But it's included, obviously, in the unlikely potential that there might be something that would prompt his application.
This franchise agreement that we're voting on tonight is something that we have discussed I don't know how many times. And the attorneys did make a presentation to us on this, and there were two items that we had to discuss, and we gave them, we gave you and the attorney license to complete those items with just making a recognition to the council after they were done, which was done at the following meetings. We did go over those two resolutions, or those two parts to the resolution. And so this is just a reinforcement of everything that we've already discussed and voted on.
Well said. Yeah, I was quite impressed with the detail that Mr. Ray Berger inserted.
Mm-hmm.
And for me, it seems ironclad and somewhat bulletproof. And so, if it was my opinion, I think that it was a document that reflects the hours and the detail that went into the research that prompted its drafting. So...
I think to get that portion approved about the reimbursement was great because that if something does happen along the way, the county has not been forthcoming in any part of this. We've had to spend like pulling teeth for everything. So for him to get that in there, that gives, just in case they pull a stunt on us, we have an opportunity to bill it.
It does go on and say that even after the agreement is approved, that we could still ask for additional compensation if conditions arise.
Right.
So it is, it is in there.
And that's good because the county did everything they could to cost...
To make that.
To make it, to get it out. So we would not have any chance whatsoever.
That's the same thing in the number 1.1 grant of franchise, too, where it says here that, say, I'll not convey any right title or interest in rights.
Mm-hmm. It's just a temporary.
Temporary.
And they have to have it or they couldn't maintain the system. Okay. Well, are there any other questions or concerns about the content of this resolution? During them, then I would put it to the council for your official vote. All in paper of said motion relating to this resolution, I say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. This, when signed, will represent the last official, I think, required to set the stage for the city's efforts to get our system back. And that begins, the clock begins to tick on April 30th when this...
And the way we're moving with our budget excesses right now makes us look even better for the possibility of an audit this year saying that we are in good shape. And that would be a major hurdle for us to get over.
Well said, yeah. And that will be, I think, highlighted in item number three. All right. Well, let's, with that having been out, let's go with item number two, ordinance 2014 dash 05. It's the mandatory site sewer repair replacement ordinance, and we had, with great anticipation, you probably then briefed that...
Know how to talk to anyone about what happened today.
Okay. Well, then I can tell you that all of our good efforts to try and get this passed were kind of derailed because Kathy Reed received a copy of it yesterday, and she had a chance to review it and noted that there were certain elements of it that were missing, that needed to be extracted from the city of Kelso ordinance and inserted in here to be kind of applicable to the Gibson Olsen involvement in this CDBG grant. It's not going to be difficult to retool it, to insert it, but it wasn't feasible to accomplish that within the timeframe to be very good. So we have made contact with Jennifer Robertson and Carol Morris. They're aware of the particular details that need to be in there and so have informed us this afternoon that they definitely have it ready well before our next council meeting. It's not going to create any drama or delay on the part of Gibson Olsen. Kathy Reed suggests that if there is some concern, because frankly, Mike Marshall with Gibson Olsen is highly motivated to clear all the bureaucratic details involving this project. Because, as you know, we're shifting from, to replacing the pipes to the city residential houses, and that changes the gravity of the process. Without the verbiage in there, providing teeth to the process, we would be frustrated and have to do it over again. So anyway, I don't think it's, we're gonna, Kathy Reed's suggestion was that we encourage Mike Marshall with Gibson Olsen to focus on the replacement of the manhole covers. Not just the manhole covers, but the replacement of the manholes. That portion of the project would have plenty to keep busy. So unfortunately, we're not prepared for council action on this. So unfortunately, we're not prepared for council action on this agenda item.
So we delay it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any heartburn, irritation, now's the time to get it.
Do we need a motion to table the item until the next meeting, or?
Well, it will probably incur, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary. If you're willing to buy the explanation, it would be true.
I have a question about the ordinance.
Please.
From over on topics. So in the, in the permit types, there's a permit for any side sewer additions, revisions, or repairs.
Yes.
How is that, since we're going to ask most of the citizens, most of the houses in the community to replace their side sewers, are we going to have to ask for a permit for each, each citizen and each household in the community?
Essentially, so, yes.
Well, they will, if they do any, need to do any work on it, they will need to get a permit through the building department, because it will need to be inspected by our building inspector, and that's generally what the costs are for, what the permit fees are for. Yet, so yes, just as if they were to have chosen to do it on their own, or whether it's due to the ordinance, anytime someone does work on it, they're supposed to get a permit. So it can be inspected and make sure it's tactfully done.
I think that we had a question from a member of the community relating to your question. Would you care to entertain that question from?
My question is, would that be?
You state your name for.
I apologize. Hallie Sword, eight eleven, East Street, Vader. My question is, would that be the four thousand dollar hookup that you mentioned the other day, for a sewer hookup, but it would be some kind of fee that we would all have to pay if we get our sewer line, if it's necessary to replace it? Do I understand that right?
Yeah, it's part of the cost of replacing or repairing a sewer line, is that you get a building permit from the city or the county, whoever is in your, whatever jurisdiction you're in.
Ballpark, I guess, of the cost.
This one says six hundred dollars is the suggested amount. All of the.
But bear, bear in mind that if the resident qualifies, that would be covered, if I'm mistaken, by the grant funding, so.
And just, something just to have for general knowledge, this is the way it's been explained to me by the planner, Rob White, is that the costs that are being suggested are based on their experience of what it averages, average time and cost that it takes to provide the proper engineering review or planning review and inspection. And so these costs are not meant for the city to be, you know, fluffing our, our coffers. They're meant to pay for the cost of providing that, that service. So we can get more detail about it if, if you would like more detail, we can do that if you're uncomfortable with it. Yeah, more detail, okay.
And I would add to that, and I hope I'm not overstating this with my observation, is that these were, these drafts have been prepared by the experts, we've placed a lot of credence in, and are necessary in order for us to qualify for the CDBG grant funding. And they need to be in place in order for it to be implemented. So we're just kind of a jump through hoops that we would never have the verbiage to implement before. I hope that clarifies my understanding of this. In other words, it wasn't my big idea.
No, but when you want free money, there's always a string attached.
Yeah. Our hope is that the vast majority of residents of Vader qualify for this grant funding, to pay for these costs, to get their side sewers replaced. Okay, so, where were we?
Table.
We were ready for a vote.
We were tabling that one.
Do we need a motion to table that?
Well, I would act on the will of the council. I don't think it's necessary, but if the council so, so inclined.
Let's table.
Go ahead, make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table the discussion and the passing of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash zero five, mandatory side sewer repair and replacement to our next meeting. Do we have all the information received?
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted before you by Mr. Plin to table. This motion, as noted, for the reasons specified. We have a second?
A second.
Who's that?
I'll second it.
Okay, a second by Mr. Penison. Do we have additional input, comments? Then we'll place it to a vote. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, next item. Okay, this relates to ordinance two thousand fourteen dash ten, which is not ready for council review yet. This has to do with further discussion that carry over from our previous council meeting, in which ideas are emerging from the council relating to the budget surplus. And we were not prepared to draft that ordinance quite yet, because there are other topics that I think that, at least from my perspective, the council needed to be aware, and at least take under advisement on this topic. And I have, do you have any clarifying input at the outset of this agenda item relating to what I've just said?
No, I think you've covered it.
Okay. I hope this doesn't come as a surprise to you, because I know from our last meeting there were a lot of strings that were dangling.
We haven't made any conclusions on what to do, so how can we make a decision what we're gonna do?
Exactly. But here's a couple of things that I felt prompted, and they're not all inclusive, they're just concepts that have occurred to me here in the last several days. I mentioned that we're making progress on the Burlington Northern San Antonio grant package. And as it's metamorphosizing, as I am sensitive to feedback from the park board and members of the council, and with this new potential prospect of purchasing the property to the south of the historic jail. What's happening is, we're, we're hybridizing this application to include the prospect of Burlington Northern helping this grant in purchasing that property. Plus adding the potential acquisition of some playground equipment to go on that property. And so, a lot of the feedback I've gotten from the church, and I haven't spoken to Pastor Durham in the last ten days, so there may be something new that you're aware of, and this might be a time to inform you if you have, but I'd like to contact him again and see if there is a tentative price that he might have on that property. Years past, it's been connected to the property to the east that had the house on it, that is currently for sale for, I think, twenty-four thousand dollars.
Somewhere around there.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. And, but that has nothing to do with this, consider council consideration. It is totally separate. That I have confirmed with Pastor Durham, that there's no longer any need to consider acquisition of that property in this potential arrangement. So that's one potential use of some of the overage. It might help in the acquisition of that grant funding, if we can apply some funds towards it. Does that make sense? I'm not sure how much. I would like to insert another proposal. Yesterday, in responding to some concerns about the charitable food program that's been taking place in our community by members of the Assembly of God Church, including Mr. Plin on our city council, utilizing curb space south of the post office has created some concern on at least one member of the community's part, they're impeding public access to the, the post office. So I was asked to contact the owner of the property on which the post office sits. And I did, because I've had regular interaction with him in the past, he's a very loyal and devoted friend of the city of Vader. I'm not hesitant to provide his name for public application, it's Dave Campos, who lives in Vancouver area. And he was shocked and mortified that somebody would try to disrupt the good efforts of providing charitable service to members of our community. So as a message to any such sort of individual, he's granted full and complete access by anyone who's engaged in that activity to whatever portion of the property, south of the post office, you want to, you just have to access it through the alley, and you can drive on the grass, and put a tent up, or whatever you want to do, they're, they have no liability in the city. Then he went so far beyond that, that conversation, he readdressed a topic that he'd brought up several years ago, in which he would be most interested in selling that property in its entirety to the city of Vader, if there was any interest in it, or a possibility of it. He owns it outright, he'd be willing to carry a contract. He doesn't have exact figures, but he would, whatever price is negotiated, he'd like to see twenty percent down on it, if it were possible. And, but he receives the monthly lease from the U.S. Postal Service for that property in the amount of four hundred dollars a month. It will go up in two thousand and fifteen to five hundred dollars a month, and he would turn that funding over to the city if the city were interested in considering that as a potential option. So I throw that out to the council members for your consideration as well.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Did he, did he say about the guy that most of them own a lot of?
No, he didn't, does matter.
He didn't?
No, but I didn't ask, and so I'm sure if I had asked. But I will ask him, I'll make it a matter of record. And so, yes.
Can I, so what you're saying is that if the city were to engage in a contract with this gentleman to purchase the property, that once we engage in that contract, we would receive the rent money from the post office?
Yes, we would.
So in theory, we could take that money from the post office and directly turn it around to pay the contract, and in theory, this wouldn't really cost the city anything except taxes.
Except the down payment.
The down, yeah, that's true, the down payment and the taxes.
He'd like to see twenty percent.
He has to decide how much first before.
Insurance.
Liability insurance, in case someone gets injured.
That would come under the whole company.
That'd be nice, because the park board, they can go and mow it for me.
But, yeah, it's an intriguing prospect. The city would have some property to sublease if there were some economic development.
That's a commercial zone, isn't it?
It is, yeah, absolutely. But I told him I would obey his proposal to the council for your, he's under no rush on it.
Did he suggest any price?
Well, he did, but I'd prefer, that sort of thing, if I'm not mistaken, would be brought up in an executive session.
Okay.
I had to, scheduled it, but if the council were interested, you authorize me, I could go back and I could ask him, yes.
At one time, I can't remember how long ago, but the post office was going to shut down our post office here.
Yes, that was about a year or so ago, they made a move, but.
Two or three years ago, something like that, I can't remember.
That's what, then withdrawn, and the feedback that I've gotten from the postmaster is that there's no likelihood that it's going to be closed.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. So, I thought, oh, since he can carry the contract, there wouldn't be any need for realtors or any other strings attached to it, but if the council were to give me an informal authorization, I could talk to him about it. I told him I'd get in touch with him tomorrow morning, if the council were interested at all in pursuing the acquisition of that.
I'd like to hear more details.
More details?
Yes, more details.
Two for two, are you curious?
Yes.
Okay, then, all right, duly noted, we need a motion on it, and just authorize me to do more research, and I'll have it available for you in our next council.
Super.
But the one last thing I wanted to bring up on this agenda, item twenty eight to seven, this is important to me, and I purposely not had any private discussions with anybody on it, other than this morning I gathered and convened our, our paid employees of the city of Vader. I have to couch this very carefully, because I've just completed a performance evaluation of all of the paid administrative staff. It's, we do it annually, and I'm pleased to report that Ned Pelletier has completed his six-month probationary status, and completed his performance evaluation, and has done extremely well, and played together as too with Jill Nielsen and with Diane Floyd, and find their performance to be exemplary. And I've considered their, the training that they've received, the level of professionalism that they demonstrate, and the performance of their responsibilities. And I would remind the council that at the end of two thousand and thirteen, I made not a strong, but impatient plea that you might consider bringing their wages into more compliance with what other communities comparable in size pay their employees. And as you're well aware, the minimum wage in the state of Washington is now covers at about ten dollars an hour. And Ned Pelletier and other Public Works employees start at ten dollars an hour, he's started at eleven dollars an hour on a technicality, but, but that's approximately half of what we would normally pay a Public Works employee, of course, with some training involved, but, and Diane Floyd is still making eleven dollars an hour after two years, and not having received a pay increase, but having observed the increasing confidence and confidence that she's having, and as she provides more assistance to our city clerk, treasurer, who is also making well below the city average at sixteen dollars an hour. So, so my sense is, as I evaluate their performance and the contribution they make to the community of Vader, that I think their pay is borderline outrageous. And for me, as the individual responsible to oversee and work with them on a daily basis, I will give an impatient plea to the council to consider demonstrating your willingness to support their ongoing level of professionalism and performance by rewarding them with modest pay hike for the remainder of two thousand and fourteen. And so I would submit for council consideration, you are obviously the ones who make those financial decisions, that you consider the possibility of. possibility of using some of the extra money to reward them. And I would put an impatient plea out there that I know as we approach the summer months, I know that most of you are well aware of what Nev Pelter's been doing on 24 hours and we've raised his hours to 24 hours a week. That's three eight-hour days. It's a little over half time. And normally, we've had two full-time Public Works employees and both of them would make well over 18 to 20, and one would make over $30 an hour. Our one part-time Public Works employee, a dollar above minimum wage and he's doing what I know you know he's doing. So he's, I talked to him about whether or not he'd be amenable because he's retired and I think you're aware of the drama that he didn't want to now be part of the Public Works three-year-long waste treatment process. But he'd like to throw his full energy into what he's normally been doing, that's making the city shine a little more than it does and to maintain the landscaping and the paving and pothole pilling responsibilities he's had. And he is still doing the testing and sampling for a waste treatment plant as you know. So I talked to him as part of this proposal to see if he'd be willing to increase his hours if the council were willing to entertain that notion. And he indicated, as he thought about it and talked to his wife, that he would be willing to add an extra eight hours a week if the council were so inclined. And which would bump him up from 24 to, it'd be four times eight is 32 hours a week. On the condition that he have some flexibility so that if his wife did want to get out of Dodge once in a while, if he'd take it three or four day weekend. So I'd submit that. And I would also submit for council, I don't want to give you overload here, but Diane Floyd is also, works 20 hours a week, which is four, five-hour days. And she'd, we've always wanted to get our second city clerk employee up to full-time because we've normally had two full-time city employees. And she's indicated that if the council were amenable to it, she would be willing to increase her hours to 24 hours. She has other employee as well.
No, she doesn't.
What's that to do?
She has other, yes, charitable, other responsibilities.
She mentioned that as a restriction. So that's a further concept. So if the council were so inclined, I certainly would welcome that increased hours just because Jill, our city clerk, could then continue to cross train. We wouldn't suggest that the city hold the open more, but that it would give Jill a chance to share some of the overwhelming clerical responsibilities onto Diane's shoulders. You, I could understand you might not be sensitive or aware of the amount that is on Jill Nielsen's plate, but I am and I guess you could only take my word for it or you could go and inquire as to what her job performance, job requirements are. Anyway, there. I haven't pounded the table and I've not pulled out a hanky.
Since you are more aware of what is reasonable pay and more aware of exactly what the city would be able to afford, it would be appropriate for you to submit a proposal to the council for each of the three employees with what you think would be a justified performance?
I have no qualms about doing that if the council would give me the authorization to engage in it.
I would like to hear what you're talking, dollars and cents.
Okay. I can do that. Would you?
Yep.
Give me that authorization? Okay? We did print some numbers, but, and I have them right here. I was prepared to pass them out, but in the spirit of negotiation, I might aggravate our city court treasurer, who was privy to the conversation, she shared with me her opinions on the process, which I think you might find quite pessant. But I would like to, as a matter of public record, study this and perhaps refine it a bit more than it's been refined of this draft document. So if you give me the authorization to do that, I will refine it and then put a copy of it in your box in the next couple of days for council consideration. Okay? Thank you for listening. I thank you for the respect for giving me, wanting to talk about it.
I think you ought to consider one other item.
Okay. I'm done talking on this agenda.
Okay, well, this, it works in conjunction with what you're talking about. There's been talk about buying a dump truck. There's been talk about buying more equipment. I think you ought to look at having the truck that we have make the bed a dump bed. We don't need another truck. Yes, it is possible. There's a kit that you can buy and install and you can make that a dump bed. And I know guys do it with pickup trucks, they do it with everything. And that would give Nev, that would save Nev a ton of time.
It would.
And the other thing that would save him a lot of time would be some type of trailer that he can hook behind the truck, load the tractor on and haul it places. Because right now, he's, I time, I used to do this stuff and you time it and the tractor go, creeps along at four or five miles an hour and it takes him, he was filling a pothole up here with some gravel, had to make three trips and took him four hours to get three scoops of gravel. So if he had a trailer behind the truck, he could haul the tractor down, load it up, he could put three scoops on the back of the truck, haul it up, dump it and be done in an hour's time. So it would be a considerably more efficient way to use our employee than what we're doing. So I just asked that be considered. I looked at it and I looked at it and-
We obviously talked to Nev and I've had that same conversation and if we were to engage in that strategy, you're absolutely right. If you have an employee on limited hours and one of your objectives ought to be to maximize the efficiency of every single hour that he's got, that would make a dramatic difference. I can assure the council here, what you're saying is accurate. If we could get that truck to dump, it would radically change the way he does this.
I think I bought the first dump truck and then when I was out of office, I got rid of it because the dump truck is much more feasible for a small city like we are. And also, I wanted to get a trailer to haul the tractor on it. Hey, run the tractor up in the dump truck, go, there you are to a gravel pit or wherever you want to go. And this flatbed was a nice new truck, but to me, it's a useless piece of junk for the city of Bader.
It can be made to be useful, the truck.
Can you fix that to be a dump truck?
Yes, that can be made a dump truck.
So what do you, well, maybe we could research that and we could-
I'm not familiar with all the companies. Where I live, there were people I used to go to and say, I need a dump truck out of this. And they'd order a kit, told them what I had to dump, what size, what the trucking handle, and then make a dump bed out of it. They'd cut the bolts off, set it all up and make the whole thing dump. I used to buy my trucks plain and have things built for them. So it's, it's very feasible. It's not that big a process. I'm watching a guy down the street here, he has his own pickup. He's making a dump bed out of this pickup truck. So the kits are available and it makes a lot more sense than having a flatbed that he has to shovel on and shovel off and he's just wasting so much time doing that.
Okay, well, that and the trailer, then if the council's not opposed to it, we'll set that research in motion as well. And we'll just keep dragging out this agenda item until we give the council the full gamut of what seemed to be emerging for your wizened, inspired decisions.
I'll just reinforce, I do feel that we have some good qualified people now and it's time, it's time for the city to give them the tools to do the jobs that they have to do.
Boy, I would underscore that. I can attest to the fact that this is probably the first time in my tenure as mayor that we've got three competent employees who you can trust, who work hard and have the level of integrity that serves a citizen well. So I'm all in favor of rewarding that sort of employee. Anyway, on that editorial-
Get us all the numbers and we'll go from there.
We'll do that. Well, with that having been discussed, I know that, sorry, it was my bad. I didn't have to. Item number four, unfinished business, status of sewer operator hiring. I can, 60 seconds. We've advertised, we've got one application and I anticipate there may be one other individual I'm waiting to hear from, but when we'll close the application process here probably in the next week or so unless there's some problem with that. But I'll throw a rant and I'll keep you posted on the progress. Okay, item number five, council discussion on tree limb branches drop-off area. I think we can handle this in about 60 seconds too because I've got feedback from the community and the council, which we were talking about terminating the branch drop-off area. But after receiving input feedback from individuals who benefit from that service, myself included, I think the general climate that I'm sensing is that we want to continue allowing the residents to bring their branches to that location by the entrance of our waste treatment plant. Mr. Pelter has indicated to me that he can manage that pile by getting the county chopper and he can handle it. But what he suggests and I agree with is we put some sternly worded signs and maybe even a camera there to chill the occasional resident who takes advantage of and drops off their household garbage.
Oh, the chippers don't handle household garbage or-
And, no. And/or grass clippings. It wasn't intended to be a mulch pile and I can assure you, Department of Ecology will, if they find out that we're allowing grass, materials of mulch pile in that zone, I've been informed in the past that that's a no-no and I'm not sure why necessarily, but we can't do that.
Oh, the grass develops heat and it becomes, with all the chips, becomes a fire hazard and they have that problem. And at the chip plants in Longview, they have to have fire crews 24/7. In the summer months, it gets hot enough, they have fires and they have to sit there and keep it watered. So that's why they don't want the wet waste.
Your pH levels also will be, also ask you, want that stuff to stop.
Okay, so if you are opposed to it, we will drop this for council discussion unless someone here in bad shape want to close it. But we have a-
The council has already made a motion previously to close it so that if, they would need to make a motion to open it. Sorry, I hate to tell you that, but-
I'll make the motion and we keep it open with the restrictions that we said, with better signage and with, if that doesn't help, then to put a camera up there and find out who the culprits are dumping the trash. So that's my motion.
Right, Mr. Plin is aggressively submitted a motion as you've noted. So not put a camera up at first, but try some sternly worded words.
Just get signage.
Signage, okay, we'll do that. So you've heard that motion and we have a second, Mr. Olson. Any additional commentary? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
You opposed? Excellent, that's decisive. Now let's leap into new business, ordinance 2014 dot zero, well, these are the formality ordinance resolution that need to be in place for CBD grant and for the anticipated timber harvest process. So I hope to click on it. Item number one, ordinance 2014 dot zero seven, the street weight limit.
I'm sorry, there does need to be a decision made before this ordinance can be adopted as far as the streets. Do you want me to do that explanation?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the only thing that's not in here in this ordinance is the restriction on which streets we want to restrict for the weight limits. It is going to require a proper engineering report and analysis in order for us to know what weight limits the streets can handle. And so that's going to take some time and some money, so that's something that's going to take a little while. So the attorney suggested two options. She said, one option would be to adopt the streets that were restricted in the previous ordinance, adopt those to the new ordinance and use that as a stepping, as a beginning point. And then as the, we get more information and analysis on the streets, we can amend the ordinance and change the streets, change to the, to the proper streets. The other option, she said, would be to set like a 30,000 pound limit on all the city streets, just do a blanket. That would still allow people who drive semis to bring their cabs only in and park. And she said it, we could do that. And then again, when the engineering gets done and we get more information on our streets, we can be pickier and pick and choose, you know, which ones we want to address and which ones are open to where they are.
That CBDG grant, does that cover that engineering cost to go through?
This has nothing to do with the CBDG money.
It's just the timber.
This is just a topic that has come up because we have two lumber harvests coming through. I submitted the applications that were, the applications that were submitted, I gave them to the attorney for review and she looked at our ordinance and she looked at the permit and she says, we can't do this. So she says, you have to have a new ordinance. And so this is, that's where this is coming from.
I remember you showed that to me the other day and I said something about them changing their path, exiting through the woods and said, was that considered or they?
Well, I haven't talked to them about that in particular, but that wouldn't change the need for this ordinance.
But it would change the streets that we're going to put restrictions on. Unless we go with a blanket on all the streets.
Like a 30,000 pound.
We have talked to Carol Ruiz with Gibbs and Olson and she has agreed, she's an engineer with experience in streets and such technical information. And she's indicated she had helped the city in this process and she's working with Mike Marshall with Gibbs and Olson. But we haven't had any feedback with her in the last 10 days and so we need to refresh in that thing. But my experience is that the only street that probably would not need to be subject to this ordinance would be between, on D Street from Sixth Street to Nineth Street. It could probably withstand, of course, 506, but it's already included as-
Yeah, six to nine, that's, that exceeds state specification.
It does. So, but I would just include every other street as being subject to the parameters of this. And I could tell you that you would have a storm if you put the weight that would include the semi trucks.
Okay, that's what I was going to say because years ago, when we started this, years ago, the street ordinance for weight, we had to take and look at the logging trucks empty because of the fact is that there was three times as many log trucks, loggers, living in different parts of the city all the time. And that was why you can't run them out. You need them. You need the people.
Correct.
And so that's why we made the ordinance originally so that the log trucks empty could come in on any street in the city. Because you can't designate different streets because that guy isn't going to-
So that's the 30, that's the 30,000 pound weight? Is that the one that's in the existing ordinance?
Approximately, yeah. I know the cabs would be okay. I don't know about the empty trailers.
Well, they just put their trailer on the back, they're self-carrier, so when they're empty, it's nothing to it.
I think it's from 16,000 to 25,000 pounds is about the average on those camp truck.
Yeah, so the 30,000 pound that's in the current ordinance would cover that.
Exactly. Exactly.
And so, if we pass it that way.
Yes.
Then we would be, we'd be okay.
As you see, and we could insert that blank, just that section of D Street. Everything else needs to be subject to.
But every street that surrounds that would have the limit, so I don't know that it would make any difference if you inserted that section or not, because to get to that portion, they would still need a permit, so, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you could, you could put it in there, but I don't know that it would help anybody to have it in there, because they'd still need a permit to get there.
If the permit process for each person has a log truck, fine, make sure you have a permit, so you don't allow anybody else to come around and.
Yeah, well, but they wouldn't need a permit, because they wouldn't exceed.
No, they wouldn't exceed that number.
Okay, so just include every city street except for five oh six. That would be my suggestion.
Sounds good to me.
And so, a motion relating to this?
How are we going to word that?
Well, you would read the title and where it says, name all streets so limited, you would say, by adding all city streets except highway five oh six.
Here it says, weight limits on certain, certain city streets. Establishing weight limits on certain.
Limits on certain city streets, right, so you would change it to say, weight limits on all city streets except highway five oh six, but it already says.
All city streets directing.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have to have five oh six, that's a state highway.
Yeah, that's a state highway, so.
So, we have, we just have to put all city streets instead of certain city streets?
Right.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm going to put that motion forward.
All right.
I put, I move to adopt ordinance two thousand fourteen oh seven regarding uses of city rights of way by heavy vehicles establishing weight limits on all city streets, directing installation of appropriate signage to notify the traveling public of these restrictions, adopting standards and permit procedures for overweight vehicles to protect the city streets and the traveling public and establish an effective date.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Mr. Plin has submitted the motion as read, as I noted, right? We have a second, a second by Mr. Penison. Is there any additional commentary, concerns? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Okay, now we're getting down to the issues related to the CBDD.
Nope, not yet.
What about the street excavation?
Nope, the street excavation has to do with your, your weight limit permit. It's spawned because of that. She said, one of the logging permits requested to use part of A Street, the north part of A Street, which has not been built up into, to street code yet, it's still.
It's a dirt road, basically.
Dirt road, and so they wanted to use, to, they said they would build it up or fix it, throw gravel down or whatever, and she said that that's, again, not a wise way to do it, that you need to have parameters and directions as far as what's required when someone builds up a street, so, you know, minimum requirements, so that they don't just throw down gravel and call it good, so that it's done properly, and she says that's what these are standard regulations for anybody who wants to mess with the streets, if they want to get permission, they have to agree to these standards. So, that's what this, this is kind of part two of the logging issue.
And that's where we got in discussion about rerouting those guys and stuff down A Street.
Right, right, and we may be able to do that, but we haven't talked with them yet.
Okay. With that per question, then would wait some council discussion or consideration?
Don't we have to make a motion first before we put it up for discussion?
Not necessarily, you can discuss it at first and then after the motion, we'll discuss it at the second.
So, there was a section in this, the section three on the permit, it talks about it being unlawful for a person to dig up a driveway within fifteen feet of a public street. So, once again, we're, now we're talking about logging roads, but we're talking, we're going to tear up the whole city with the side sewer project coming up pretty soon. So, are we going to require a twenty-five hundred dollar permit for every single person that's digging up their driveway within fifteen feet of the city street?
Fifteen feet from the, from the city street is still within the city right-of-way, isn't that, along the streets? So, the right-of-way goes from the center of the road out, I think that's sixty feet.
Depends on what street.
Center of the road out, it's either forty feet from the center of the road.
From the center.
Or if the street's been vacated, then it's twenty feet from the center of the property line.
So, nobody should be.
So, forty feet from the center of the road, that's, that would take care of that fifteen feet, because that's, that would be within the right-of-way. So, now, what we're, what we're dealing with right here in that, in that statement, that fifteen feet would be city right-of-way. You could pave your driveway, but you can't dig it up.
Mr. Olson.
You cannot, in the city of Vator, use the center of the street, because there's so many streets that are eighty feet, which are supposed to be, that the center of the street may be sitting over here on thirty feet. You see what I mean?
Right.
It's just like my place. If I used the center of Main Street to come to my place, it would be wrong, because it's an eighty-foot street, but the center of it is not, basically, you must survey to get your actual property line state, place. That's almost ninety percent of the property in the city of Vator.
Not every street is eighty feet.
No, you only, we only have about, D Street, D Street is eighty feet, isn't it?
D is eighty.
And A Street, or is that the post office, is that A Street?
A Street is.
Eighty feet wide.
Pretty close to being the center, because you got the sidewalk, and you got the side, you've got the curb.
Right.
When we had A Street all blacktoped and everything, we had to survey to make sure we were going to put the sidewalk on the post office, I see, there was no sidewalk on the post office.
We don't have any other streets though that are eighty feet wide, do we?
Yeah, we have some.
Ninth Street, I was just looking at the patch map today, it's an eighty-foot wide block right down there.
Ninth Street, right here, this whole section is eighty feet. This sec, from here down, it goes to forty.
There are very few streets that can.
Sixty is eighty feet. There's sections where.
Is that eighty feet? That's the right-of-way, that's not the.
Right, the road itself is only sixteen feet wide.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that's still within, that would still fit within the resolution, because they're saying fifteen feet from the road, and that fifteen feet normally would be in the right-of-way. So, that would be covered.
Right, but in, in the case that I'm thinking of, if I'm thinking about, like, for instance, my property, I have, you know, from the edge of the road to my house, there's a driveway, and it's roughly thirty-five feet long.
Right.
It's all side sewer under there.
I think that's ten feet here.
This is nine.
So, if I have to replace my entire side sewer, I'm going to have to dig up in that fifteen feet right-of-way, which requires me to get not only a six hundred dollar permit, it requires me to get a twenty-five hundred dollar permit as well.
We had a big fight over this.
Is what it.
This tenth street.
That's what this, that's what this, the twenty-five hundred dollar permit that did within fifteen feet of the city road.
Yeah, ten feet.
So, under the side sewers, that would then mean excluding that.
Maybe if I'm, unless I'm reading it wrong, section three, permit required.
So, the question is, what is the public street? Does that mean what's already paved, or does that mean the whole easement, or what does that mean? May need that clarified.
Joe's got a circumstance where his side sewers run up the driveway.
Right.
And if he digs up the driveway within fifteen feet of, and everybody else who does side sewers, they're going to be within fifteen feet of the road, they're all going to have to pay a twenty-five hundred dollar permit to do that.
Right, I understand, that's what I'm saying.
And that's what he's saying, they're being double billed, they're asking for a six hundred dollar permit to put the side sewer in, and then under that ordinance, they have to spend another twenty-five hundred dollars, because they're within fifteen feet of the road.
We're up to thirty-one hundred and you haven't even put the shovel on the road yet.
So, what about, what about suggesting an exclusion for utility maintenance or something along those lines where they, they would be allowed to?
Isn't that fifteen feet that's right-of-way, isn't that, doesn't that come under the city side sewer portion and not the private owners?
You would think, but the question I have is, does it mean fifteen feet from the edge of the right-of-way? Or does it mean fifteen feet from the edge of the pavement? In some cases, there is no pavement, so fifteen feet from what? And so, I, you know, that seems like it doesn't even be.
And fifteen feet from the edge of the, of the right-of-way is in my garage. I measured today, I was out on tape measure measuring from the road out from my house.
We'll all be out measuring here.
So, if there's suggested language that I could take back to the attorney, if you guys have suggested language that I could take back to her and run it by her and say, you know, what do we need to do to get this?
I understand, this is, I mean, this is coming from the logging issues going on, but you know, I'm looking at from the other standpoint.
Yeah, if that was the pass and you had to put in side sewers, like you said, you'd be looking at thirty-one hundred dollars and you haven't started yet.
Right. So, unless we want to have a commercial and a residential rate of some kind.
I think that, I don't think that would, that would even work, I just think we have to, the side sewer, you're going to have one permit and that's it. You shouldn't have to have two permits for your side sewers.
Because if you have one active permit, that would, that would take over as far as a secondary permit. You know, like if you, if we take on a six hundred dollar permit, then all of a sudden, you engage in a potential violation of the secondary permit. It'd be nice just having that one permit override, you know, it just keeps it clean.
Well, when we were, when we were into that sewer deal, we were discussing the main lines running down the roads, and then we were talking about the city portion, which was in the city right-of-way, that the city, that would come under the CBDD grant. And they had checked all that and said that those are all good, and then they had to go on to the private property. So, anything that would then be in the road right-of-way would not be, if that gets.
Would be governed by the resident.
That's right. So, that would take care of that extra twenty-five hundred dollar permit, is what I'm getting at. He would only be responsible for what's on his private property and not what's on the right-of-way.
But I agree that I think we need to get some clarity.
We have to get some clarity on that, right.
And you can, if you can dig twelve inches down, it says that in here. Twelve inches down going to get me where I need to go.
We got some special rulers.
Well, to me, basically, we're looking at what D Street is, what G Street is and so forth. To me, a property line is exactly by survey period to start with. Why? Because you've got an old eighty-foot street, you're only using twenty feet of it, why should the people be responsible for all the city street?
They're not. They're not, because according to all that stuff we had before, that was considered city right-of-way, and that would come under the city portion of that CBDD grant. Anything off the city right-of-way is then private property, and that becomes the responsibility of the property owner. So, to me, it's fairly clear, but that wording could get us in a whole bunch of trouble.
So, it sounds like, what I've heard from the council is that we need to revisit this, refine the meaning and intent of the verbiage, and revisit it in our minds, council.
Can I request, since I, it appears to me that the idea of having this in the ordinance is to protect the street from being undermined from the side, and obviously, that's something that, that we do want to address. Is there verbiage or some type of suggestion you have for what you think might be a reasonable way to, to address that situation that I could take to the attorney and say, they think it would be reasonable to do something like this, and then see how that would need to be worded to make it work? I mean, what do you think?
I would think we'd want to word it, ask the attorney to write it, so that if the people were working on their side sewers, they're not going to be double dipped by getting a, a charge for this, working near the street and then paying a permit fee to get the side sewer for another six hundred dollars, because the way that's worded, unless we have a clarity on where the private property is and where the city property is, we're going to get ourselves in trouble.
So, do you just want to address side sewer, or do you want to address other utilities as well, like what if they have to dig up their water line, what if they have to replace their water line? Do we want to address that as well? We don't, or do you want them to have a twenty-five hundred dollar permit for water?
Well, there's two.
I mean, I'm assuming not, assuming that that's what you're intending, is that they'll allow people to do the work that they need on their property.
Well, aren't the, the permit fees, like the six hundred dollars, that's to, with the permit, the city's going to hire an engineer to come out and make, and use that money to make sure that they ran the pipes correctly and it's attached correctly, right?
Yes.
And likewise, the twenty-five hundred dollar permit is to pay an engineer to come out and make sure that the road is still stable after you're done digging. So, even if we only charged one fee, it's still got to cover the engineers that come out and make sure that the roads aren't going to collapse, right?
Right.
Yeah, but you're not going to, if you're putting in a side sewer, you use a trencher, that's a six-inch wide trench, and that's not going to affect the integrity of the road. So, if you bring in a backhoe and you're, you're putting a swimming pool at the end of the road, yes, you're going to cause a problem, but that's, that's going way beyond the intent of what we're trying to accomplish.
Maybe there is a, some other, somebody, some other city that has an ordinance that says, you know, if the, if the area that you're going to work on within, next to the street is with, is only eight inches or less wide, then you don't qualify for it.
So, maybe we need to look for some suggestions on other ways of wording and doing this, you know, approaching this particular issue.
Yeah, that's why the state would let them cut the road, they made them tunnel under the road.
Right. And Mr. Olson.
Well, it's our policy in the city, as long as I can remember. The city, you pay and say thousands of dollars for a sewer hookup or a water hookup. It's been the city's responsibility for that amount of money to go to the property line, and from the property line, whether it's a water or sewer connection, it's the private, it's the property owner. He's already paid three to four thousand dollars for a hookup fee. That's why we originally had that hookup fee, is because a man come with a backhoe or the city with a backhoe, for sewer line, he's going down to six to seven feet to get to the property line, and then he comes up about four feet, and then from then on, you pay for it. But we're already charging X amount of dollars for a person to, just to put the sewer line in, period. Sometimes you don't even have to do that, if they're stubbed out like I did up on G Street, every piece of property there. I took my sewer pipe right to the property line, but yet you're still charging the person three to four thousand dollars for a hookup fee. But all you have to do there is tell them, there it is, and hook up the sewer. That is all.
What about suggestion of taking this ordinance, approval of the side sewer ordinance, and just stating within it, it's not subject to any other fee, any other, we're trying to avoid the double fees. And within this ordinance, you could simply say, and we talk about fees here, it's not subject to any other city fee for doing this particular job.
Yeah, just include this CBDD project as a standalone.
Right, not subject to other fees, other city fees as.
And you wouldn't, and you wouldn't get hit with a double dip then.
Yeah, don't dip this over.
We can certainly.
Ask about that.
It seems unlikely that we would need an engineer to come out and make sure the road was still stable for someone to hook up to the side state, the side sewer.
Right.
It seems unlikely that we would need a twenty-five hundred dollar engineer out there. He's just going to look in the hole and go, that looks good.
Right, right.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Check.
Right, exactly.
Okay, excellent input. So, it sounds like we will hold off on that, I think we know where we're going with it.
Okay.
We'll see you again. Now, we'll see what. Now, we'll, we'll see what the next item, resolution zero point. There was one comment as we were talking about city streets, that before we leave that topic. I've been in communication with Mr. Shai on the city council. And he's doing research on street funding sources and there's the TIB, that's the construction infrastructure board that has control of a certain amount of the state sales tax.
It's gas tax.
Gas tax. And there are pubs out there and it brought my attention that if we were to do some research on it, become experts in it. And we came up with a project or two, is that what you were?
Yeah, if you look at the historical for the neighboring cities, our neighbors are nearly yearly are getting their streets paved for free through this, not all their streets, just certain sections. You have to apply for a, you have to apply a, a project, so you put together an application for each section of street that you're interested in. And, and then they, it takes about a year for them to get around to coming back if you're approved. And so Vader actually had this done in two thousand and seven. They did a large section of Ninth Street. There's a lot of pictures online, you can look at this historical, historical project and see, see the dramatic improvement of the city streets. And then before that, we had, nineteen eighty-three, I believe, was the other time that Vader utilized this resource. And if you look at our neighbors, Toledo, for instance, every year, they get, they get money for it. So this is a matter of someone getting out there and there's workshops where they teach you how to do it. They come up in June, I think June second through June 12th, I think. And they're all over the state. Our closest ones are Lacey and Vancouver. And you can go and you can learn how to apply the, for the application. And so, anyway, that's, that's what it is.
I think that we should aggressively engage in this if others are benefiting from it. I know that it's something, it sounds to me like we should.
It's our money, it's our gas tax.
So the next train is June second.
Yeah, June second through June 12th. And I, I think the June 12th date was in Vancouver. I don't know when the Lacey date was. One was a Tuesday and one was a Thursday, and I believe they both have like one o'clock, they're during business hours.
I believe that, as I mentioned, that we should research and become experts and ensure that we have a body present at that workshop. If there's any volunteers.
I could go to the Thursday, Thursday date, it's at one o'clock in Vancouver. I would hope I would be back in time, it's a city council day.
If you couldn't, you certainly.
That's excuse absence.
City business.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to, to.
But the more people, the better, I mean, we don't, if someone wants to go to the Lacey one on a Tuesday, that'd be great too.
All right. Then with that caveat, that's, I hope that we can, in the spirit of the street paving, we've just embraced in the last several years, I think, just doing it ourselves with what money we've got because I've been kind of jaded in the realities of active rates of getting any of that money. But where we have youth and, and energy and enthusiasm and determination, maybe we can break the paradigm. We didn't some of that money. Okay. And since we're talking about this, you should know that we are responding to Carol Morrison and Rob White's request that we stand up the planning commission. And have begun the process of identifying either in the, the website, which has been set up, has got the qualifications necessary and an invitation to members of public sector. It's been interesting participating on that commission. So, but if the council members have any names of individuals, please let me know. Yes.
I'm sorry, you brought up the website?
Yes.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to explain to everybody present, because I know people have had difficulty getting on the website or finding the website. And I will tell you the website, I'll give you the address. It's www.vaderwa, W A, wa, dot org. And do not type this in your search engine bar, the bar that's down low that will bring up, because it's too new of a website and it doesn't come up on your search engine. Type it up at the very top in the address bar, do the W W W. Because if you type it down in your search engine bar, the one that you would probably normally type in, it won't come up. And you won't, you won't be able to find it that way. So, but that's the actual address, so you type it in the top bar and you'll go right to it. And Rob's done a nice job of setting that up quickly and we're already adding more things to it as we go and it's.
Cool.
It's great that he already has the experience with that and so.
Yeah, it's a thing of beauty and you can go back. So inspired to go listen to these council meetings, which are available via that website.
Are they linked up to the website?
They are not.
Yeah, they're still on YouTube.
Overstated.
They will be.
If you, if you search for City of Vader on YouTube, you can find, you can find them.
The recordings that you've posted.
I thought we're going viral then, someday. Make everybody sick. Okay. Well, all right, then I think we threw that TIB plug in there. It will get some energy flowing towards that. Let's go with item number thirty-three, the resolution. We have just killed any prospect. Resolution zero four, twenty-fourteen, permit fee schedules. Any thoughts for that?
This is not an essential.
Yeah.
My first question is, here we go again. I don't like gouging our citizens, period. Here, a black official, Lord of the citizens. And the first thing I see here, it says, may also require street evacuation permit like for a side sewer permit. You're paying for the side sewer permit already. Now, because in the city streets, you're paying another five hundred dollars. I don't agree on it, period. You can't gouge the people in the city too much. That's the first item. I haven't got any other.
Want to make a suggestion about this? Because we, council has not come to finalization about the side sewer issue. I think it would be reasonable to remove all the side sewer permitting things that are addressed here and the excavation permit, again, that's listed here until council makes a decision on that. The idea of this particular resolution is this is the beginning of a, a resolution that will have all the city's fees for every single thing that the city charges fees for. Eventually will be on this resolution, just starting with items we're addressing first. That way, this resolution can, can be reviewed by council at budget time every year and look at those permit fees, see where we're at, see if they're enough, see if they're too much. Make adjustments as needed by a resolution instead of having to redo all of the ordinances each time we want to make an adjustment to the price of the permits.
And this is important to get in place.
I think the ordinance should be thrown out.
Well, we do need, we do need an ordinance in place because we are, this logging thing coming up. We have to have something in place to permit cut.
And you guys did pass the weight limit ordinance, so it would make sense to leave that weight limit information there. But, but it's up to you completely how you want to do it.
There's three things we said would, would take out, and that was the stuff on the side sewers.
And the street excavation.
Side sewer is the first portion and the next, second one down is side sewer addition, revision, repair per connection. And then the other one was inspection requested during side sewer installation, requiring deep cuts extremely wet soil conditions backfill based on.
So all of those items down to the weight excess permit, for the excess weight permit?
Right, and then the, the next section, the street excavation.
And removing the street excavation items.
Since we didn't approve twenty-fourteen or late.
And you could change the balance, right?
Yeah.
But they suggested the amounts based on their experience with what it costs to get in and engineer, a road engineer, to actually make sure the road wasn't going to collapse, right?
Right.
So I don't think we can just arbitrarily change these permit prices because they're probably accurate to get an engineer in. What we need to do is just adjust the scope of work that would require that excavation permit.
Yeah, but I think you meant for the weight, excess weight permits. Because we're removing the excavation permit part, right?
Right.
And we're removing the side sewer portion. So the only thing that would be left would be the excess weight permit. That's the loads on the street.
Are we going to leave in the callback resulting in poor workmanship?
Where's that?
Subsection of the sewer.
Yeah, that's below the, yeah. Callback resulting from poor workmanship or failure to comply with city ordinance.
That's all part of the side sewer stuff.
Okay, so that's beyond.
So from there up is gone. And a little bit on the first page, right, the bottom of the first page is gone.
Okay.
Well, you can table it or you can pass it with only the excess weight permit information included. Removing the other items until those ordinances have been straightened out.
Because this is just the vehicle by which it will eventually enhance every.
Then we can readdress it at any time.
And add it to.
We have to add or subtract, right?
Yeah, you can add to this resolution anytime you want to. Add those items back on once you've decided what to do.
I make that motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve resolution oh four dash two zero one four as not drafted with the mo, with the modifications that we just spoke of, which are to only include the section on excess weight permit from ordinance twenty fourteen dash zero seven, removing the references to the side sewer ordinance twenty fourteen oh five and the street excavation permit ordinance twenty fourteen oh eight. I move to approve this resolution oh four two zero one four, establishing fees for certain permit applications and appeals.
Okay. And Mr. Shai's made the motion to approve this resolution as noted, excising the verbiage relating to all CBDD side sewer permit and fee. And other exceptions as noted as well. So we have a second on this, Mr. Hensley? Okay, the second of that. Any feedback relating to what you just heard at this moment? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're down to the, item number four, ordinance two thousand fourteen dash zero nine, code enforcement.
Well, we're right back in the same thing because here, here we have side sewer or twenty fourteen oh eight and the street act rate permit ordinance, which had allowed to set the sewer in here. And I think it should be completely reworded and reworked and given back to the council. Okay, who names? Never woke his daughter to go back to school.
Oh, that's not, I'm not going to throw dirt.
This ordinance is a blanket code enforcement. It doesn't have anything to do with a specific, with the side sewer specifically. This is a blanket code enforcement for building code, for construction, zoning code, subdivision. This is, every city needs to have a code enforcement and we don't have one. And that's one of the reasons why we can't enforce any of the ordinances that we have.
Because we don't make code enforcement.
We don't have code enforcement. So this is, she's.
This is the most important one we're working on tonight.
This is the first thing that really needs to be done before you can do any enforcement, is get your code enforcement ordinance taken care of. So this is the most up-to-date code enforcement and she's using this with several cities in the state. Huge cities, small cities. She's made adjustments, you know, that are a little bit different for each city, but I.
I echo those comments. She's, this is what will give us teeth and you have to have it in there in anticipation of your CBDD. But this applies to any of the likelihoods and circumstances.
And to answer Mr. Wilson's question on it, and he was saying that it's bringing up the side sewer ordinance and the street excavation permit ordinance. If you read through this, it's saying that since we are passing ordinances, we have no strength of enforcement. And what this thing does is give us strength enforcement, the ordinances that we have passed. And it's just using those as examples. So they're, it's not using those ordinances as a means for passing this ordinance. It's just giving us an example. So what we are doing now is passing an ordinance that gives us some power to say, you have to obey the rules. And that's what this is saying.
This has the weakness that Jim Buzzer failed to insert in previous reports.
And, and you will be passing these other ordinances eventually. I, I mean, I assume your, your intention is to pass those other ordinances eventually. And so when they do pass, this will make, you know, those references will make sense, but.
Right, yeah, if you go through this ordinance, other than at the very beginning here where it references the side sewer ordinance and the street excavation ordinance, just by name, it doesn't talk about any of the details of those ordinances. So we could pass this and still make changes to those other ordinances with regards to the fees and the scope of work without impacting the, the appeal. This is just about the appeal process, things like that, so.
If you read on page one, on the purpose of, purpose of intent, it goes through that. It, it explains the whole thing about the ordinances and why we have to have something here because we can't enforce anything right now.
Well, and one of the things that she explained to me was that all your ordinances, your new ordinances are going to reference your code enforcement ordinance as the method of enforcement for that particular ordinance. And so we, you need to have one of these. If you don't like this one, you can request something different, but there needs to be a code enforcement of some kind so that it can be referenced. Otherwise, you have to write code enforcement in every single different situation that you come up with. And it just, it's time consuming, it's money, it's money that goes down the tubes. If you have it all consolidated into one process, then that makes, makes sense to me.
Would there be some, for agents, council member?
I'll move and make a motion right now, because then we can bring it up for discussion if we have to. I move to adopt ordinance two thousand fourteen dash zero nine, establishing civil enforcement procedures for enforcing city codes, including civil penalties and appeal procedures and establishing an effective date.
Okay, Mr. Flynn has moved to pass ordinance two thousand fourteen dash zero nine on the basis of so noted. Do we have a second?
I have a second, man.
Second advance rolls. Now is your chance to, Flynn, provide additional commentary. Hearing that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Applaud the council. It was longer than we anticipated, but I think you may have set a record for. Yeah. This is a reflection of what we're getting from our city attorney and our.
That double dipping is not good.
So thank you for your responsibility and your astute reading of this material in such a short time. So if there is no other commentary from council members, then this meeting adjourned in twenty-three.